Ready to begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is two point O agenda approval. Three point O business address report along to the items. Have anybody online? Renegation annual pursuit of business. It's point one, election of one point two, one point three, board chair. All in here.
Turns out that's not how we're supposed to do it.
You know why I like it's a good thing, because if someone can get shot, they just got blown.
So that brings us to six point two, election of board vice chair.
Can I nominate a board? Whoever wants to.
It was kind of springing this out to everybody, but I prepared for a backup, the first and the second amount of comment, but maybe there's someone that wants to do it.
I'll nominate doing this vice chair. Twenty three resolution. Twenty three. First need control of these, and then we vote on the act of them.
We just acknowledge them and then we go on.
So we'll acknowledge six point three, six point. Sound right? That brings us up my own new business.
Jessica's absence, the seven point one resolution for university achievement. We're trying to wrap up the Francis T. Bond Middle School. We've got a couple of projects we want to finish up there, work around the football fields. Work around the side of the gym. We've gone out of bid twice and had zero respondents. We did reach out to a contractor who was willing to do the work. Asked that the bid, they gave a bid, and then we had to some volume engineering and remove some things from the bid so they could bid it. We're under or on budget, I should say. But we need to move this more quickly and have this approved so we can get the work done. That's not going to disrupt, that would disrupt students. Or else it slaps, those types of things. And then during the school year, we'll have a couple of projects that can be taken care of and not disrupt students. So that's why this is on as I remember. We need to move forward and not through bidding process.
Especially with person.
I did have a couple of questions that I can't look at, you know, start off answer for my spell face. So this science shed area, is that because there's not enough for storage or why do they need that?
This science shed area was originally environment studies that we had. At the old most, we had a shed in the building for store stuff.
Yeah, no, that's totally makes sense actually. So there's dirt area, things you're not here for in the classroom. And how are we doing the bathroom? Is that going to be pumped or is that composted? Is that for outdoor athletics?
For athletics, yes. And I'm not sure, I don't think that's wrong. I think that's also been the outdoor storage for the science. That added would increase the size of one. That could take that as well as yard lawn type equipment. Part of it is we have to get instructors.
A scoreboard is that included or is that going to come out of?
Three seven point two superintendent report?
Yeah, so talked about how last couple of years through the pandemic has not been what anybody had hoped for education. And we've also talked that they're best, because sometimes isn't what we so one way to get to that will still increase input and understanding of what we feel our community wants from us as a school district. And part of getting there is gathering input, gathering feedback. So at the last conference workshops that we were at, we heard a presentation about students, the members of appointed members provide input, feedback on what kids want, what students feel they need in high school, or hopefully, you know, their experiences at the elementary, middle school. So met with Trin yesterday and we got a really big conversation on how to move, move something like this world. And so we pulled the Tiger twelve policies. And so here's the first one that they referenced. I think this is a great way to get student involvement and get more in touch with what our students feel they need and in addition, what our community feels they want themselves. So here's the model policy, there's an AR that follows that I think is also pretty good. And one thing that Trin and I talked about is we don't want to wait, we want to get students involved now. So do you recall Tiger twelve's middle school districts? They had applications reviewed in May. And our thinking was, let's, let's get started through a trial run. Let's identify as a student or two that we can reach out and ask if they're interested in serving this capacity. As they serve that capacity, we find to the AR, we find to the tools. So at the end of this next year, the twenty two, twenty three school year, we will then go out for applications or whatever the process that we determine, gather candidates and who for that. So my suggestion and wondering would be, this might be something that we modify and for students. So this is a work policy that we'll have a student representative to the board. And then the AR, which is how it gets put in place. We review and develop that over time and then have, have that ready to go. So here's the AR, and it's actually really pretty nice. It outlines everything for us. Couple of highlights in here, number one. Speak in interest of district high school students, express the views of students as well as students' own views. Six, have the same privileges session as applied to board members. I think it's important though to look at number nine, there talks about the state matters brought before the board that require executive session or the risks related confidentially speed for a school personnel, which I think is important. The one thing that I heard was having a relationship with the students so they felt comfortable bringing up concerns and speaking in this venue. And so that's something that I believe we need to make sure is in the AR, how that's done. And how we, for you as board members, reach out, well incorporate that.
Wouldn't see that getting like a HR report, things like that.
Well, those are all public reports, so yeah, we get all of that.
I'm not sure it happens very often. I'm just trying to, mostly because I was actually chatting to all my kids. We had a meeting though, like we did to back here in August last year, that we know we're not exactly go how we plan or go well, what would we do? And that's such, I wouldn't want to put a student through that. So, but, but it could go wonderful too, if we know, so. See my children. And I thought about that part too. There was a lot of kids sitting in that day and upset a whole bunch of people. So that, that's my concern.
After cross sectors got there, and I, I think we had conversations with the family and the students. It could be, it could be an uncomfortable meeting of our roles to listen to the community. And if they have uncomfortable things to share, we need to hear them. And so, you know, coaching them up would be helpful, but if it's something that felt like we're going to have, have might suggest.
That's how they are.
I, I hope not, we've got a free argument. We have opinions, but we also have they just need to be coached not to engage. Because people might find things to talk about, asking, well, what do you think? You're a student. Well, I think we're here to listen to you and hearing, but you just, that's the one place that you can be trained. Is if somebody challenges or asks them a specific question, that they don't that they have the same patterns or their, but also they're trained. We're not, we're not, if you die a lot.
Well, I think maybe it'd be very tough for that for two hour, third rate probably be the rest of the team, and we probably.
Yeah, I think possibly the option, my guess is if they're junior, excuse me, junior, senior high school, that but also they're going to want to be engaged. We've got a meeting going on that's taking that long, but I, I agree. There's some requirements in here as far as number of times missing. And so athletes may find a chunk, but also maybe if they have early morning class and eight o'clock is really late, then so maybe it's a voluntary decision. The concept of this is that they are essentially given the opportunity for to express their opinions to be, other than voting, requires to be elected to do so. That they carry the same words, their speech, their concepts. If you try and litter it too much, then the value of the purpose goes away. Ultimately. Well, yeah. Ultimately. When we get this fully fleshed out, students will know exactly what they're getting into. We'll be very well defined, structured and say, this is what we'll be reading to. Much like when we have our meeting to set the expectations of the board, the student will be involved in those conversations. And we have a solid understanding about how to operate in those, in correctional, or since the Robert's rules order. All those concepts provides the students to be in a space that technically they're eighteen and not, and then graduated, they have the same opportunity to be elected to do that. I think it provides a lot of concepts that we can offer that, you know, in the current case is your stand up is something to so ultimately, to have your voice heard is an incredibly exciting thing regardless of our concepts of being bored or whatever. But also this type of civic work, I think, needs a more greater understanding about how students impact the board. And they will be a conduit to be able to buy back and forth with the students. So I'm a little concerned about trying to but that was the theory behind trying to do something and build what makes sense, what's realistic, what's not realistic. And we do essentially try by far with lots of grace, lots of ounce, and then we stay with it all the time.
Along with this commute, get the actual copy made of when the kids spoke at the conference that we can have, you know, for a couple of years is to be able to let whoever would make it back to be in this position watch those kids talking because they did an incredible job. For the two that were upstairs, we just weren't, they were like thirty years old at the high school. So I think that'd be used in terms of watch in here. Yes, so we'll get it while we can.
I believe that San Diego District is similar to ours. Her feedback was that what she's told was probably accurate. So I think she would have some good feedback on.
And it's very good. That's or like is really already on it.
That will, oh. Yeah, for sure. I think it would need to be ascertained whether the past. Right. But, and that's the piece that Trin's moving to is we, I, I see a timeline to have. Have a policy like in August first reading, August twenty fourth, second reading on the nineteenth of September, the twenty eighth of September, final reading, saying, this is what we're going to have. And then we spend the rest of this year with a student designing and reviewing the AR. So then come May, we're ready to reach out, we have a plan on how we're going to gather applicants.
And have our kind of question.
Yes, yes, exactly. Yeah, that's, that's kind of the thought, right? Boom, or some other student that maybe has the experience would be really helpful to have a couple of practice connections with Sandy Am person maybe even to have a conversation so that we can model the AR with the script. I think it's exciting, I know this has been kind of close to Prince Harvey's talking about this before, so have a see what it looks like. I think the good night.
No, I just think those kids did such a great job selling everybody in the room. I mean, I didn't say it's perfect, everybody's like, oh, someone were even here, so good. I mean, they're just so impressed with how well that they spoke and everything else. I just thought that they were a perfect example to keep around for a while, for kids to keep and just watch. See, this was definitely a reference.
One of the struggles that they found was one of the struggles that we're going to have down here is there are kids that are popular, there are kids that have a lot of skills and have a smaller set of social dynamics. We want to make sure that we are inclusive and wide ranging, we're inviting to these positions so that we're not just here to, here's a panel about that there are other capacities and frankly, voices that may be suppressing for whatever reason, that we want to help it. And it's welcome to. And not that our student leaders can't do a great job of reaching out to everyone. So the other piece that I think would be important, and something Chris just put in as part of her key. Get our student onboarded and then have our O S D A density discuss for, for us, you know, ongoing over board operation or practices. Be a good refresher for us, but also that helps solidify for our student that this is how you operate on board rules. And so just having that is not a consistent piece. So I would like, I think Christie and I need to get, working on scheduling that. I would suggest either the August twenty fourth or August tenth. Maybe later, maybe September fourteenth. But we need to, we need to have, well, I would like to have a time with you to talk a little bit about goals, where our plans are after I work with our leadership team. So I want to set that groundwork, have you worked on some goals you want from me? I'd like to have that steep part of that as well. So what takes to look best, check calendars or?
We just went after twenty one.
That, that would be my suggestion, and I'd almost think of course it's twenty four.
Well, how many?
But twenty, twenty fourth is like four weeks away, five weeks away.
We don't want to talk about it, we have to come fast eventually.
Maybe, maybe seven hundred forty is a better date. Two hundred thirty weeks. So first, we have to figure out if a potential candidate is, is willing or not, because that's going to dictate the so I don't want to spread anything and say, hey, by the way, absolutely, this is what I should do. Frankly, if if available, I'd rather change another pieces that have to be we shoot for the twenty fourth, maybe a longer meeting, is that a board meeting or a session?
Or regular.
It feels awfully close. So I would, let's do the twenty fourth, see if we can identify, if we reach out and pull, and try to hear that as consensus.
If not, we all have a student.
Okay.
We can each break one channel.
So we can, we can.
And then we can just help practice.
We can figure something out. So we'll, we'll totally say the twenty fourth, is it easier for you guys to go later, longer, or earlier?
I'm not, no, it's
all right. Maybe let's see.
I abstain.
You abstain. Let's, let's see if we get, I really like Vince out of the train. If Vince tell him what we're trying to do, he might be able to tailor it a little bit. Maybe he can reach out to the Sandy Am student, have them submit because we have that magic. And, and have, maybe a little bit of extended or be, have, maybe have inner. So Chris can also start working on that, shoot for the twenty fourth and the
I meant to back that whatsoever, but never mind two minutes, there isn't principal reports.
You keep it to their actual two minutes.
Yeah. I'd like to make some adjustments. Yeah. I think it's nice to have those reports. And we want to hear what's going on in schools. I always tell my principals, yeah, two minutes, they never make it, but two minutes, two things that are going well and one thing that you want to work on. And it's really tough for them to get to the one thing I want to work on. But I, I think I would like some maybe more in depth. Want to see how technical or in depth reports on what does schools do? I want to hear, hear more about Yale, let's hear about Abbott going on at McBride, or I want to hear about sources of strength that's beginning to take root at those parts. But I want to hear that kind of stuff.
If we're not getting vegetarian, then we are.
Yeah, absolutely. And one more thing. I'm going to give you a little speakers, just anybody, regardless of how old you are. So this book is called Deep Kindness.
You could just do a fifteen minute nightcap for all of us.
You guys are trying to bring in kids home with a bottle of crap.
You get it now, here it is. Kindness is essential to helping heal the world that is worded by simply and anxious than ever. And it's time to reinvent how we talk about it, exercise it, and bring it into our daily lives. Deep kindness pairs anecdotes with action to inspire critical self-reflection and make real change in ourselves. This book takes an honest look at the gap between kindness and our ability to practice it well, teaching us that the type of kindness the world needs require new skill, dedication, courage, their purpose, and a whole lot of so.
Tell me if you plagiarize this for your graduation speech.
I did not. I did, I did not.
I remembered the content.
The content was kindness, that's the book we've been trying to preach. So that's why this book was like, this is it. All right. All right, so if you, if we grow up in a household where kindness looks like two parents who make our dinner each night and sit down for a family meal, we may have a hard time understanding someone who comes from a single parent home where kindness looks like somebody, someone remembering beliefs and leftovers. One of the biggest barriers to a kinder world is when we speak about kindness. When we make something sound easy, we don't allocate the necessary resources, energy, or time to actually prove that. The kind of kindness world needs isn't being accurately portrayed, let alone taught. As a result, there is a clearing of delta between perceived importance and actual action. What if we talk about kindness in a way that honors how hard it is? What if we taught skills in our education system supported the challenging and messy work of deep kindness in our lives? So this is the book that I'm extremely, will be reading. So I'm looking to get some insight and our hope is to be formed a little bit of kindness. And I think you'll find this book to be enjoyable. So that is my report. And I want to make sure I got it all together.
That brings the deep point, so is there to address the board for the items? Oh, that brings us nine point O, extra. All in favor? I'm fast to get a little too long. I have that. Just now. I could wait so long. You have it lighter.
I think he's
I'll miss her every other week.
Well, I think that this is something I had to read all the rest of. All right, so nine point three, resolution twenty twenty. Sorry, I did, I was skipping. That was on the other page. Okay, nine point two, election of the twenty twenty two dash twenty three board vice chair, board vice chair. Then we've got second to accept district English as the board vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
You forgot.
I always know the quick, it won't be all those opposed. Right, so nine point three.
So I think we conversed these the last, Jeff has made any.
Kelly, because we've always had to do them. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
I moved to group nine point three at nine point fifteen through nine point fifteen.
So, and all those in favor, accepting nine point three through nine point fifteen, say aye. So, and all those in favor, excepting nine point three through nine point fifteen, say aye.
Discussion with, I mean, didn't pull or touch on the board case schedule. It's already settled.
All right. Let's try it again. All those in favor say aye. So at that point, upcoming.
The only thing I can say is this resolution just. I mean, interpret that at some time. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were doing pretty well at that. Yeah. But. Across the bridge, this, across that bridge.
And there's only, I only had one other question.
I asked.
All right. Twenty twenty two, twenty three calendar, why there isn't a three? Says two oh two. You know, I was for you to start putting like an anger and I. For me, there's one thing that I would like to do is. Sometimes at some point, you know, we, we did before when we had our, our meeting or whenever, okay. It's just, we go back and we get each of the events, how things played out in the last year, even maybe two years. And just talk about things that any of us felt we might do that different, might do it better. What could we do to do it better? Whatever's been over because for all of this is a big change in the last couple of years. Especially too. And I just, I, I just keep looking back at things and we get to like, yeah, we didn't take care of that. And the main thing is that I need to think about it is because a lot of things happened on the Fourth of July that my whole entire whole respect said. We're gonna go talk to someone about this for the last four years in a row and then do it. And that was terrible. So I wanted to be sure, you know, I want us to go back and look at each of the things that has happened in the last two years. And let's talk about what could we have done better? Or did we love it exactly? You know, giving graduations. A different thing, you know.
So it's worth.
Yeah.
Could be open plan. I mean, it's affecting me really, but we could do whatever the public does sometimes. Other questions? Think you more of a question of this century that like really will be. It doesn't have to be town hall style. And I heard that took for a big thought.
Can we, and you're not suggesting that be the next board meeting, but give us skip.
I think it would be nice to do it free. Or even right after. She starts like that in his that number. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that.
We've been talking about.
Yeah. What we've talked about coming up with different ways to engage our community. Feedback, have that feedback loop closed, not this one way. So. It, it might be helpful. Trent and I actually talked about this last night. Coming up with ways for us not only to engage our community, like maybe go to P T O meeting, list what's going on there. But also schedule the going to. Being at school once a month for lunch and just being in the lunchroom. Somebody wants to come in and talk to us. Great. If they don't wanna see us. But being present. And accessible, I think is important. So coming up with those ways that we can do that, I think would be great. So kind of put your, put your thinking caps on. Just other ideas, the more input and feedback we get, more community is stronger.
Or add the hood on. The activity calendar for our calendar, what we're getting on, it's right now. We have a couple that do it, but not everyone. Then we'd be able to.
Well, maybe that's part of our. Really things that are.
They can tell us and they write it down and it does have a big calendar.
Didn't write it. I was sorry. I have notifications to next.
But sometimes for your last.
Having a, like, like I said, with enough notice, I can do a lot of things. But when I get a week's notice, it's almost impossible to.
I can put it to a, to a secretary and ask him, if he's gonna try and like truly invite us, we can have it ready. We would all love it either.
Vanessa, whole month's calendar had two months.
We may know her. I mean, I think they're really excited too, but.
Yeah. Yeah, they want, they want. People wanna see their board.
Well, and if you did it that way too, and it's covered, then that way your five will show up and where about their five of us or one of the two or whatever it is. We might all find me.
Or even I feel they got so many teachers. I'm like, oh my gosh, they're so good. Cause they knew about it.
Each of us. Has kids that are graduating. Each of us.
We each do.
I got four years. You know, it's just couldn't be made it so that rather than just chair signs. That it says board member. Sets.
I have one that needs to be read out and you do one that needs to be read out then.
I, I got next. I got next, but I, I can just see, you know, that we, we have them. We have kids and it, that's kind of just one of those little special things that, that. Your kid can take with some of that.
Let me, let me see. My initials always yes, we could do that.
If you have ten thousand, I've already printed it.
Nobody was a fan of our, and judges.
I just, it's just a question.
I think it's an extra line underneath it.
I, I was gonna say.
Let's, let's see what we do. I, I, my gut says, yeah, we can do that. But Christie, can you make sure we've got that noted?
Probably it's more of a Johnson situation or, you know, choice than I know our administration. I, it's just a matter of justice. That gets asked to all across the nation. So it just be a matter of.
Sure.
And it's.
If they didn't.
Three with an extra line.
I mean, it was just.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
It was just kind of the thought that I had that, that I, you know, we each have one, you have one, you have one.
Mine have five hundred.
You know, that is kind of nice. I can see three coming up that, that I'm, you know, that'd be kind of.
You let the kids choose who's next.
And you know, and after particularly, let's say board members, the kids watch. That's who should play. Let's see.
Anyway, it's just, and it just, it's not a, it's not a huge deal. It's just.
It was funny. It gets assigned.
I met a couple of kids this far and one of them said, well, I think I'll do the part. If you did, I should.
Well, they, they, they have the goofy smile, but they're just like, I'm done and everything else is shut off at that point.
I'm holding off my parenting.
My name, my whole, like this thing, everybody else.
Okay. So anything else? I move it.